Yeah, I don't know. I thought I said we asked.
What's that happened to?
I'm sorry.
I thought I told you this first time. But I can't remember who I told.
The grandma, grandma.
Yeah.
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 So much.
Yeah.
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 Just cereal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
I think they like.
Yeah.
It's wondering when it's gonna happen.
Do you have any people come up to your view?
Yep, yep.
You have a whole board of.
I guess you have some six. Sessionist.
Just.
You're on Facebook.
These parts are so large.
It's like, oh.
So.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just to go.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No one wants to come back.
No.
Body house.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We're gonna start this meeting with the Hubbard County Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment. I've got a meeting procedure to read quickly. Thank you. All persons in attendance at Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meetings are expected to comply with the following meeting procedure. Thank you in advance for helping make this a manageable meeting. Copies of agenda item materials are available for public viewing on the table located at the back of the meeting room. These materials are not to leave the table so that others in attendance may also view them. Please turn phones to off or vibrate during the meeting and conduct any sidebar conversations outside the meeting room. Interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the PCBOA meeting will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Disruptive persons will be removed from the meeting. The chair may terminate if speaker's privilege of address if after being called to order the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. Written material concerning agenda items must be submitted to the Environmental Services Department by 3:30 p.m. on the Wednesday immediately prior to the meeting date. Written materials will not be accepted after this deadline or at the meeting because the PCBOA will not have sufficient time to review them prior to the meeting. Such material must state the agenda item for which it is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. Planning Commission business is conducted first followed by Board of Adjustment business. The chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The chair will read each agenda item into the record and ask the applicant to come forward to the presenter's table, state his/her/their names and addresses for the record, and explain his or her request. The PCBOA will then discuss the agenda item with the applicant. The chair will then ask for public comment on the agenda item. To facilitate an orderly, efficient meeting, there is a three-minute speaking time limit per speaker per agenda item unless the chair allows the speaker additional time. The chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if after being called to order the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. When the chair recognizes the speaker, she or he may approach the audience podium and microphone, state his or her full name and address for the record, and write such on the speaker log, and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used by the recognized speaker because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. A speaker should state his or her comments and address the issue, not the applicant's. All comments are to be directed toward the PCBOA. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. The chair reserves the right to ask a group of similar comments to appoint a spokesperson. If written comments have been submitted to the PCBOA, please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they are already a part of the record and copies thereof have been given to the PCBOA. After everyone wanting to speak on an agenda item has done so, the chair will close the public comment period on the agenda item. No further public comment will be taken after this point. The chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address issues raised during public comment. The PCBOA will then continue its discussion on the agenda item and the chair will entertain a motion on it. The PCBOA will make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once a motion is made in second, the PCBOA will develop findings of fact for conditional use permit and variance applications and then vote on the motion. Once a vote is taken on an agenda item, the PCBOA will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at 6:00 p.m. and continue until all agenda items have been heard or until 10:00 p.m. No new agenda items shall be considered after 9:45 p.m. The PCBOA at its discretion may at its discretion continue an item that is on the floor at 10:00 p.m. Any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another time or date, preferably the immediate following Tuesday at 6:00 p.m., and no further public notice will be provided for such a meeting continuation. The PCBOA through the chair may modify these procedures prior to a meeting or an agenda item. All right. Thank you. First of all, we've got the approval of minutes from the Planning Commission of the August 25th meeting.
There are none.
We address the change in the shoreline management ordinance. Did we?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is Veronica. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented for the August 25th meeting.
Set. This is Ken, second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the August 25th Planning Commission meeting. Oh, no, I can't do that. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Veronica?
This is Veronica. I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
And this is Larry. I also vote aye. Minutes have passed. We have no old business unless we call this old business. I guess I'm not sure. But we do have a... Find it here. It is new business. We have to approve the final plat application of country line of states by Hubbard County HRA-EDA. It is the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter, section 3, township 145, range 32, Farden Township, part of parcel 070301080. Applicant is requesting to plat 40 acres into seven lots. The preliminary plat application was acted upon on the June 25th Planning Commission meeting. With a recommendation to the county board, the application be approved. The county board approved the preliminary application on July 1st with no conditions. The final plat layout is the same as the preliminary plat. There is a title commitment showing good clear title and the required letter from a third-party survey are showing that the mathematical computations in the plat are accurate. Thus, staff recommends that the final plat application be recommended to the county board for approval. I would entertain a motion to do that unless there's discussion. First of all, I need to open for public comment. Any public comment on this plat? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Now, any questions from the board?
This is Veronica. I was absent during the preliminary plat. I do believe I might not have been, but anyhow, I reviewed it again. I saw no issues either. I'm in favor of recommending approval for this plat as well.
This is Ken, I'll second it since I read in the paper all seven lots have been sold already.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the final plat. Ken, how do you vote?
Tim.
Yes, do you?
Oh, I thought you said Tim. Oh, Ken, I approve.
Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
This is Veronica. I vote aye.
And this is Larry. I also vote aye. All right. That should be the end of the Board of Adjustment procedure part of the meeting. Now we'd move on to approval of minutes for the Board of Adjustment.
I make a motion to approve the Board of Adjustment meeting minutes for August 25th, 2025.
This is Ken, I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the August 25th meeting. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Larry. I also vote aye. Minutes have passed. All right. Moving on to old business. We have variance application 29-V-25 by Joan Luth, part of government lot 2, section 7, township 145, range 33, Helga Township on Lake Plantanginet, a recreational development lake parcel. 110700200. Applicant is requesting a variance from section 902 of the shoreline management ordinance for proposed grading in a steep slope that exceeds permissible volume. This application was tabled at our July meeting, so we're gonna revisit that now. Joan, state your name and address for the record, please, and a brief description of your variance.
Sure. 50737 Vinewood Road, Bemidji. And to move the existing structure back to a proposed structure about 15 feet in order to comply with allowable amount of earth removal on this steep slope.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board right away? Seeing none, I'll open for public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment.
This is Ken, if you're looking for... I think the applicant has pretty much done all the things that we ask her to consider when... From the June meeting. I think in addition, I would note that she has a very good buffer zone across along the lake. The new plan does not encroach on the 50-foot setback. There was a discussion about water runoff from a neighbor. I think when we looked at it, we actually think this will be an improvement versus the current condition. And with that, if there's no other comments, I'd make a motion that we accept the application and the findings of fact from staff.
This is Veronica. I have a couple of questions before we move forward. Okay. Quick thing is the septic here on the site plan that you have here. It shows 10 feet from the corner of that garage. Is that the drain field or is that the tank?
The drain field is on the other side of the far east side of the road.
It's the tank.
It's the tank. Okay. So it has 10 feet plus a little bit since it's a little bit away from there?
Yep.
Okay. So there's no room at all to move that structure even just a smidge just to make sure you're off of that neighboring property line? Is that correct?
Right, right.
And during our lot views, I mentioned to you about the overhang because your current loc... Your current property doesn't have any overhang.
Right.
But this particular proposal does show that the overhang is gonna be what's on the property line.
Yep.
And not your building, correct?
Exactly.
Okay. Perfect. I did want to state a couple supporting things also that this new proposed excavation area will now be located outside of the shore impact zone. That was kind of a big thing for us too because that first proposal at 15 feet closer was right in that shore impact zone. So that is kind of nice as well. I would also staff has advised that there's be a condition be placed on the motion if the proposed evacuation or excavation of the amended site plan A 1.3 be approved only if the proposed new house is constructed.
Condition is built per the plan.
Correct. Per A 1.3 plan.
Yes.
That's the latest one that we... The revised plan.
Yeah.
So.
Also, this is Tim. The... Was the findings of facts on number four gotta be marked?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes. Thank you.
That's gonna come to that.
Yep.
That was my only question.
Yes.
When reviewing.
Then this would be Veronica. I would second the motion with that condition on there and the staff's findings of facts.
That does not address number four being a no, though.
It is a yes. It just needs marked, yes.
It's a misprint.
Correct.
My bad. All right.
Just a thought, I don't know how what the rest of the group feels like.
I'm open, whatever. One at a time, or what? What do you think Veronica?
I guess we could, if we could do one at a time and get consensus, then the final motion would be those. What do you think Veronica, what?
This is Veronica speaking, um, I... At this time without public comment yet, I'll probably just hold off for a little bit and we can do public comment and then go forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, then we will open for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we will close public comment.
The, this is Veronica speaking, the only, I don't know which that you're maybe looking at of retaining or anything to that sort. At this time, just judging by the application, the number of violations and such, and just the costs of whether they're worth it or not, to me it's simply just putting things back to where they belong, or within setbacks, I'm with staff on this, so. The only thing I would suggest is that if the applicants want to retain either that gazebo or that, or a shed and accessory structure, then they would need to find one to meet the shoreline management ordinance requirements. The gazebo can go on the patio in the back where there's already a patio. And the platforms can be removed. And I agree with staff as far as the, the riprap and the sand beach. It is very conflicting to have one and then the other right beside it, so.
Based on what I hear, I think we should go down and monitor and discuss each one. That's my thinking, no?
Sure.
Yep.
Great.
This is Mike, do we, do we handle them differently if they bought the property with those on there already? Like the riprap, if that was there when they bought it, I mean?
That goes into the discussion as to whether we think it's stay.
Okay, let's attack them one at a time then, um, the first one is the gazebo and the pavers that are underneath that. That is located within the hundred-foot ordinary high water setback.
This is Ken, um, I, the, the platform or pavers, they're all, they're, what were they, I think fifteen feet? So they, they don't even meet the twenty-foot setback that we would put with the thing, so they don't. So my initial comment is, uh, um, that gazebo and those, um, pavers should be removed.
This is, I agree.
Any other comments?
This is Veronica, I agree that both of them should be removed.
Okay. Part two then is the...
Is the other small platform?
Is the other small platform, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. I think that one's fairly easy, if we're removing one, we should remove this one.
Yeah.
Correct.
But I, but I think the applicant should understand that you are entitled to have a platform like that twenty feet back from the ordinary high water mark up to a hundred fifty square feet. Uh, with some provisions, with Eric can help me out, there are some provisions about um, what needs to be done along your shoreline. But if we deny those, you would have the opportunity, I think, to go back to Environmental Service and say, alright, we want a hundred fifty square feet one, we want it twenty feet back, and then Environmental Services would have to check your shoreline uh, cause you're required to have about five hundred square feet of buffer or runoff protection into the lake, so if we deny those two, you do have the opportunity to go back. Say, if I'm wrong, Eric says, oh, you can then come back and ask, which means you could pick up those pavers and move them back, but they have to be at least twenty feet from the lake. Uh, and they, uh, and they can be up to a hundred fifty square feet, so. Like if you look at this picture, you possibly, uh, back that fire pit's probably twenty feet back, it could be closer to that fire pit or so, so. Okay.
Um, number three is for the accessory structure.
Myself, I think that should be moved back or put at six by eight.
This is Veronica, I agree.
Are you talking about the, not the Rubbermaid Shed, you're talking about the wooden one?
The wooden section, correct.
This is Ken, just a, 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 a different, a little different thought, it's been there. It was in existence, it's been there for eight or ten years. Uh, I realize it's a little bit oversized. But I personally would be amenable to it staying if, uh, if that were the will of the rest of my colleagues, so. My thought.
This is, go ahead.
This is Larry, I, I agree with you Ken, that one, it's close to the right size, um, it would definitely be a pain to pull that out of there just to replace it with one slightly smaller, so I would be in favor of keeping the shed there.
This is Veronica speaking, how long has that one been in place?
It was there when we purchased the property and we've had the property, will be eight years in November.
Okay.
This is Mike, I leave it there too.
Um, okay, part four is the stone along the staircase coming down. Yeah.
This is Veronica speaking, I'm gonna back up one second please. Um, that shed, nine, nine and a half by ten, I know it's been there ten years, but that's ninety-five, pretty much ninety-five square feet, correct? And we only allow a six by eight, forty-eight, so that's twice as big.
Yeah.
So I still disagree that leaving that there, even though it's been there ten years, it's twice the size. Nearly twice the size.
It is.
Just wanted for comparison purposes.
It is outside the shore impact zone. Thought on it.
Okay. Back to the stairs. The stairs Eric, there's not a way to even permit that if it's approved, correct? Yeah. In my opinion, the rocks need to be removed and needs to be revegetated. There's no way that we can accurately, you know, get any type of permitting besides the variance to say that yes, we can keep it. I do understand they're runoff, but there's other ways to tackle that.
I want to disagree with you, but I can't. Because I can't answer the findings on that one.
You can't answer any of them, I mean?
Oh, on that, specifically, because it was created by them.
Right.
And so
Yeah.
I have to agree with you.
Question, how, how far how far are the rocks at the bottom from the, um, ordinary high water mark? Have to be a good seventy-five, eighty feet, don't they?
Yeah, because the, the corner of the shed was fifty-one feet from the high water mark.
If, the shed was fifty-one?
Yeah, but I was looking at the rocks.
Yeah, they have to be. This is fifty-one and the rocks are over here.
Seventy-five.
Yeah. Somewhere in there.
I don't think there was a drawing in the package when I was looking at it from that. Well, I tell you what, if you look at look at where the shed is.
Well, the well is seventy feet from the high water mark and the, the rocks are beyond that seventy feet.
We're not talking about the rocks along the shoreline. We're talking about the rocks by the steps. Right?
Seventy-two feet, correct? At the base.
What is it?
Seventy-two feet at the base.
My thought on that, if there is, was as serious erosion runoff is there, I'm not sure, quite sure why we should propose taking those out and doing something else that seems as to be as disruptive with nothing gained with regards to, um, what's gonna be, you know, whether they're there or not, the runoff to the lake is not gonna be any different. So I would, I would, um, be amenable to, for that to stay there.
This is Larry, you said that you did try getting several different things to grow in there and, and nothing would take off? Okay.
There really, yeah, there, there wasn't, it wasn't really vegetated when we put the steps in there anyway, because that was our main way down to the lake for four and a half years before we put the steps in. And so even when we bought it, you can tell by this picture here, that there really was no vegetation here. And then there was four and a half more years of travel up and down that hill before we put the steps in.
This is Ken, question to Eric. The, the violation or non-conformance here is that requirement says a path to the lake you're allowed, what, six feet or something like that, if I recall, needs to be vegetated on both sides. The reason being, so... I mean, wow.
The intent is for erosion protection?
Yep.
And, um...
We have planted a lot of plants in the rocks, if that helps.
I don't know, short of having a bunch of high vegetation like, like is already on this picture, which would then encroach over the walkway, I don't see what other approach you'd take to trying to prevent, uh, erosion, so. Anyway, my view is I, I, I think the disruption and benefit aren't worth tearing them out personally.
This is Mike, I don't think there's a lot of erosion there with that rock there, I don't, I don't see it as being a problem either.
I think, Larry, the thing is to
Yep, okay, we've got one left.
Did, what did we agree on, on the, um, shed?
We're kinda split on that as well.
Okay.
Um, the...
I think the shed was, we had two against and three, four.
Okay. Um, okay, so five would be the, uh, geotextile fabric underneath the riprap and we did decide that that is there. So that kinda takes five out of consideration, correct?
Yeah, I'm, in looking at it onsite, I would still say there isn't a valid erosion problem there that warranted it being installed.
So we're basically gonna strike five out of the record?
No, it has, it has to be part of the application approval or not.
Okay. Well, that one should be.
Cause it was done without permit.
Oh, okay, sure.
On the stairway one, did we, are we gonna vote on that, or was it gonna?
On its own? On its own, you wanna take that one on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying, if we can decide on each of these what our, what the majority opinion is, then we can come to a bottom line. We said the first two, no. The shed was okay, three to two. Uh, the rock stairway, uh, the riprap, we, we just said we probably would. And the rock stairway, I mean, if majority of the group doesn't think those rocks should be there, then it shouldn't be part of what we would approve, I guess.
I guess I'm the only one that didn't express concern. Um, the rocks on the staircase, I guess I agree, I think, uh, that trying to get anything to grow there would be a real challenge and the rocks are already there. I do believe that they will help with erosion to the lake, so I guess I would be in favor of the rocks staying there. Okay, and then five would be the riprap, um, with the materials that we have seen in the some site visit is there, so that should be okay. And part six is the additional sand that was put on the beach.
I think, I think it's pretty clear that that has to go, or at least, you know, I think by ordinance you're allowed a twenty by fifteen rec area by the lake. This is like forty feet long, so at least twenty feet of that needs to be reclaimed, I guess is the, from my, from my standpoint, I don't know what the rest of you feel.
Ken, where does the twenty start from where those rocks are?
Oh, yeah, that's okay, that'd be places started.
Okay.
You can select a place if you'd wanna do it. The question I think for the board is, what, that twenty-foot rec area, should we allow the sand to stay there but can't ever be maintained? Or make them, uh, put that back, because making a sand beach is not something we allow by, by ordinance. Uh, it's just a matter of what we wanna do.
Sure. This is Veronica speaking, I just have a comment that I understand your twelve or your fifteen by twenty rec area, but they have already mowed all the way down to the lake. The entire area down there is their rec area at this time.
Yeah. Okay. So we could re- require a buffer then, or do something? It is vegetated and the topography is not one where you're getting massive runoff, but...
Correct.
The existing is a hundred square feet over what's allowed? Ten by ten.
Twenty by ten?
No.
Oh. There's forty feet?
Ten by forty is four hundred square feet, right?
Yeah.
Twenty by fifteen is three hundred square feet.
Well, a rec area, not that sand, not sand. None of it should be sand by the ordinance. Okay. I'm just saying that as a minimum, twenty feet of that sand has to be reconstituted into some form of vegetation. And the next twenty could be the rec area. The thing we need to consider is, do we want them also to reclaim that sand because it shouldn't be there? Or just leave it for now and let it, and let it re- regenerate itself, so to speak.
This is Larry, I don't know all that pictures there. Is that black dirt at the back of that, or is that just weeds and stuff that have been raked up off the beach?
What, I don't...
In, in the very back of that? It is weeds, okay, okay, yep, now I can see it, okay, very good. Just questioning if you were thinking about putting some black dirt in it?
No, no, no.
Okay, very good.
This is Veronica speaking, I have a question, how much sand did you bring in? Did you have it dumped, did you have like a dump trailer come and bring it in for you, did you bring it in by the bagfuls, did you?
No, we, we...
Okay. Did you have a dump, did you have a company come and dump it out by the top of your property?
Up at the driveway.
And then how much did they dump? A truckload? I mean?
Five yards at, at a time.
At a time, how many times did they come?
Five?
Do they have any pictures of the beach?
So, three to five?
Three to five, something like, three times I think it was.
Is that the before picture?
Yes.
That's when we purchased.
Yeah, that's when we purchased.
Okay. So there was quite a bit of sand added?
Yep.
Okay.
Is this a step, is, is it just?
That's that berm you were talking about.
Yeah. That all got filled in with sand then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Three to five truckloads, full.
This is Larry, so help me out here everybody, but if we, uh, allow you the, it's ten by twenty?
Twenty by fifteen.
Twenty by fifteen. To essentially stay there, are you okay with reclaiming the rest of that and planting? I know last month, Ken, you had talked about some plants from, um, who was it that actually has a kit for planting beaches?
Yeah. Uh, from, sorry, Saltwater Constellation District, but I don't know what the soil is here. Or whether, whether you just hold on.
So if we, if we get to keep the twenty by fifteen and we revegetate the rest, how do we vegetate it just like it was when we purchased? Or do we vegetate it all the way to the high water mark?
This, just one, one calculation, I was gonna say, just for helpful information that the revegetation process would also be given to you in that violation letter? It states how some of it would need to be, so you can get some guidance from it?
The, um, in the staff report, um, this is what was suggested for the, that beach area. Remove the sand beach, the area we're at least we're talking about, and, uh, any of the geotectile fabric and reestablish a dense ground layer of perennial vegetation, preferably native species to meet the standards of Section 901 of the Shoreline Management Ordinance. Still fence and a ground layer of mulch must be incorporated in the restoration and remain in place until the area has vegetated, has vegetation established over seventy percent of the area.
And this is Veronica speaking, if you plan on retaining part of that, or if your recommendation is to retain some of it, then are you still going to put forth a buffer zone? A vegetative bu- buffer zone?
This twenty feet should be redone as a buffer zone. That's, I think that's what was recommended by Environmental Services. Vegetated cover, I would suggest a, a, um, a plant-based one, not just grass, but a plant-based one.
Ken, you, you see that picture there, how much of a drop that is for how much fill was put in? Did you see how much you dropped there was?
Yeah, I, I don't know what to do about that, I mean, I don't know what to say.
I mean, in looking at the...
That, that sand, at least twenty feet of that sand's gotta go somehow.
In looking at the before and after, if this, if this ridge on the before is this here, what we're really looking at, I think, is a public waters violation. As they put, they extended their...
Oh, because the ordinary high water mark is above, is that red, yeah, red?
This is where the OHW is now, so it used to come back to here and they've placed that fill in the lake and extended the shoreline.
So Veronica speaking, if there's a public water violation, does DNR have to address it? Okay, so is that something that we don't even act upon tonight, or do we go ahead and deny it and then let them address it?
I think you could still act on the portion that's currently landward where these OHW flags are, and then we'll have to let the DNR know and they can investigate and decide if they wanna take action.
Okay.
So what we would say is that entire forty foot of sand above the ordinary high water mark should be regenerated. Or whatever you call it. Right?
If that's what the consensus ends up being, yes.
I, I don't...
Veronica speaking, my input is still the same, the sand beach must be returned to its natural state. Vegeta- revegetated as staff has indicated, and then now that they have a possible waters, public water violation, that will have to be addressed by the DNR.
Any action would be to totally deny the beach area?
That is correct. Ken, I'm sorry, but five, three to five truckloads of sand brought in is not allowed.
Yeah. Doesn't look like there was any sand beach or at all.
Okay. And then it's contradictory to having the sand beach and the riprap right beside it.
So that leaves us then with the fact that, uh, the gazebo and platform and the other platform and the beach are all denied. And that the shed, the rock stairway, and the riprap would be approved. Is that where we've ended up?
I do believe you are correct, Ken. Somebody wanna take a shot at putting that in a motion?
I can put it in the motion, but I don't know if I wanna do findings of fact. Well, let me try.
Yeah, I think my recommendation would be if you're looking to deny some of the parts and approve others, you would do two separate motions so that your findings can support either the denial or the approval.
Who wants to make that motion? I'll try, okay, I'll make a motion that we approve, um, retaining the, is it ten by nine and a half shed? At fifty-one foot setback? The existing riprack, riprack at, uh, the lake edge? And that the rocks by the stairway, um, be allowed to remain. Okay. Now I gotta find some findings of fact for those, right? Hold on here just a second, where's the findings of fact page here? Okay. Is the variance in harmony with the general purposes intent of official control? The items, um, listed in the application all are focused on preserving the shoreline and preserving runoff. And were in existence prior to the purchase of property and therefore, um, are in harmony with the general purposes intent of the official controls. Is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not per- permitted by an official control? All of the actions, uh, trying to control the erosion on the stairway, trying to control the shoreline with the riprack, and having the storied shed for garden tools or lake-related equipment are all reasonable items? Is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or property owners? This is hard. Okay? The shed and riprap were not created by the owners. The stairway, um, based on, with the rocks are unique to the slope of the property and the runoff from the cabin. And therefore it's reasonable to have the riprap there. Will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of locale? I'll say yes, the audience in the application are small in size, while they make the area within the hundred-foot setback look a little cluttered. They wouldn't change the locality seasonal and year-round lake residential feel. And number five, does the stated practical difficulty involve any more than just economic considerations? Yes, economics are not cited in the application as a practical difficulty.
Thank you, Ken.
Any one yet?
All right, we have a motion, just to clarify, to approve the shed, the stone stairs, and the riprap. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Mike.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to accept those three parts of this variance. Tim, how do you vote?
I'll vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
This is Veronica, I vote nay.
This is Larry, I vote aye. Okay. So, moving on to the other three items. Okay, this is Larry, I'll take a shot at this. Basically, we're saying no to the gazebo and platform below that. The other paver platform. And the sand beach. All need to be removed and restored to natural vegetation. And for finding effects, basically, we can just go with staff's findings on that, I believe.
Mr. Chair, you will just have to edit a couple of them that have to do with riprap, number one has a few riprap things.
Yeah, you gotta scratch some of that stuff out there.
Yep. But you will be able to utilize them.
So, the part that says there's no apparent erosion occurring at shoreline to warrant the riprap?
Yeah, correct.
Let's strike that.
And then the next one also that you, with the rock strips.
Okay. And also the, allowing the two and a half wide rock strips along the sides of the access stairs. That also will be struck from the findings of fact in number one. And the rest of those should be okay as far as I can see.
Well, since then having riprap half shoreline or there's no visibility, it's not reasonable. There's room to place a shed a different color. So there's not, the rocks on the sides scrubbed down.
Yep.
Yes, okay.
That would be my motion, does anybody have a second?
Just a quick thing, number three also needs the last sentence removed, I believe.
Okay.
And then you can adopt four and five?
Yes.
This is Veronica, I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to deny the other three parts of this variance.
But just where are we going, number three, the last sentence should be scrubbed too.
Yep, that's what Veronica just said.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Okay.
Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Larry, I also vote aye. Very good, you will get a letter from Environmental Services telling you where to go from here.
Perfect, would you recommend we start removing that sand, or can we wait on that, or?
Can we start now? We got time.
Okay, go for it.
Thank you guys for everything.
Thank you. All right. Variance application thirty-eight V twenty-five by Robert and Dawn Demers. Government lot four, section three, township one forty-five, range four thirty-two, Farden Township on Grace Lake. A recreational development lake parcel zero seven zero three zero two zero zero zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from section seven oh two of the shoreline management ordinance for a proposed addition to a non-conforming dwelling located in the shore impact zone. State your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board, Mr. Butenorf. My name is Robert Demers, I'm here with my wife Dawn. Our mailing address is six nine four four West Honeysuckle Drive, Peoria, Arizona eight five three eight three. The property in question that we're working on is three zero zero six zero Viney Trail, Bemidji, Minnesota five six six zero one.
Okay, and a brief description of your variance, please.
In June, as most of you are aware, there was a significant storm. Tore a portion of our roof off our cabin. We decided at that point that we wanted to enhance our cabin by building backwards, no more than sixteen feet. Just to create a larger, a larger property. You know, we've talked some questions, I know when you came out for your inspection, but we just want to make note that that's moving away from, from the lake. We understand there might be other issues and questions that you might have. That maybe weren't answered during the inspection, but in essence, that's, that's what it is, we understand that it'll change the roof. I guess picture, by adding, I think we all kind of agreed at the time about four feet. But in short, that's, that's where we're at.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any initial questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll open for public comment. Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment.
This is Tim, what, what exactly was the use for your addition?
It'll be just pleasure, it's our lake cabin, it'll be a place we hang out for the summer. We're expanding two bedrooms, just making them larger, more fit to have company and more people visit us.
So you're adding sixteen feet on to make the bedrooms bigger?
Up to sixteen feet, we were told that we, by our contractor, no more than sixteen feet, so. Again, sixteen is the maximum, we could be bringing it in to fourteen to twelve feet, we're, we're still working on a, an internal layout plan. But no more than sixteen feet, yes, sir.
Right, now it's a two-bedroom.
It is a three-bedroom, sir.
Oh, it is three.
Yeah, we had an addition, I believe it was twenty-ten. Should be on the record.
Yep.
Or twenty-eleven.
Twenty-ten.
Twenty-ten, I got it right the first time.
Thirty-one feet and the deck were part of that.
Correct.
This is Veronica speaking, I just had a couple clarification questions. As I asked at the lot views, we had some questions on the eaves. Cause the site plan said one number and then there might be a different number, so what are the eaves going to be?
Oh goodness, I, I believe they're gonna be twenty-four inches. However, there was that, that one area up front that I, I believe even you and I discussed, that was kind of a jutting out. So I think that piece will be forty-eight inches, but then it brings it even to the eve in the front, correct?
Straight across to the front, add that.
Eric, does that change anything for you as far as the front, you having that forty-eight inch possible overhang over that deck instead of just the twenty-four, does it make a difference?
Not that aspect, it's more now with the two-foot eve. We're looking at a slight lakeward encroachment. Eve only, but.
Correct.
And then we're also looking at a increased height from the aesthetic impact, based on what they told us at the lot view that isn't depicted in the application, that they're putting new trusses over the entirety of the structure.
Right.
Ridge centered.
Right, that was, that was my next question, with the ridge being centered now and the cabin, you said it's gonna be slightly taller, obviously, in height. Do you have a, a measurement?
Uh, our, the person who's gonna be doing the work has, has told us that instead of the sixteen feet as that now. It will be pushed backwards in the direction away from the lake and, and would be up to twenty feet instead of sixteen feet.
And then.
With new trusses.
Right.
Across the entire, yeah.
To make one full trust instead of having two separate ones for, we think for future structure, that'll be a little bit better, we hope.
How does that change these?
It doesn't change those.
At all, just adds that?
Correct, so it'd be the nine of plus whatever, so.
Silicing.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're still. Definitely under thirty-five.
Yeah, just during lot views, I saw that the vegetation is pretty sparse on the property, is that normal for that property, or just?
Yeah, we, I mean, that property has been in our family fifty-some years. And we've really done no changes to what, what it was, you know, when we took it then. The area, if you could scroll, well, right here. That has simply been because the roof came back, landed in the area where the bricks are at. And there's been a lot of traffic coming in, people, you know, picking up the, the refuse and the roof and whatever, but we've never done any planting.
Well, let me add this, because of the storm, we had to take down twenty-eight trees.
Oh god. Makes the difference.
So yeah, so it's very much barren compared to what it was.
Okay, so you had a lot of shade, which explains why it's also very bare then, I think.
Exactly.
Cause just judging by the neighbor's property, it's like, wow, there's just not much grass there.
You had to take, yeah, we had to take down basically everything that was around the cabin, so.
We'll get the property, if, if allowed by the board and, and all, we'll get the property fixed, built, and then, yeah, we would love to be able to put some more trees and vegetation, of course.
Being at forty-four foot ordinary high watermark setback, are you planning to place gutters on the property?
Uh, you know, we hadn't thought of that, is that something that the, the board would recommend? We're still in the planning phase, so we'll take any suggestions.
I would suggest the condition that gutterings be placed since you are in the shore impact zone at forty-four feet ordinary high watermark setback, that's just one of the conditions. The other one would be the staff recommendation, if the cabin's ever damaged by natural disaster. Or to be rebuilt completely, it and the decks must be moved out of the shore impact zone, which is all I would say, just a little bit back. If, you know, if it could be.
We're hopeful that that was one in a hundred year storm. And we won't have to deal with that.
But yes.
We will.
And I would suggest that whoever makes the motion, since we are, do have some discrepancies with the site plan and even with the applicant saying that they're unsure exactly what the measurements would be, then I would just suggest maximum amounts be placed with what they're in relation to, like not over twenty feet for the height, not over two feet for the eaves, not over. Sort of thing. Just cause you can't say as per site plan, cause it's not accurate.
I think you got it wired, go for it.
If you'd like, I can.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, this is Veronica, I make a motion that we approve the application. With a couple of conditions. The first condition, as mentioned, that gutterings must be installed on lakeside and non-lakeside to direct storm water away from the lake. Number two, if the cabin is ever damaged by natural disaster or to be rebuilt completely, it and the decks must be moved out of the shore impact zone. That would be the fifty-foot mark, so. And then it would be approved based on the, between eighteen to twenty-four inch eaves. And the height maximum would be twenty feet. And I think that should cover it. Just, and your, your dimensions that you have stated on the plan are accurate or less, okay?
Correct, yes ma'am.
Perfect.
Yep, and if I could ask, the water runoff, the, the eaves, how, is there a process or something we need to do to, to direct that water?
We just don't want it going down the slide and into the lake, just so you know.
Okay, I didn't know if there was.
Yeah. Just because you're in the, the forty-four foot, you know, ordinary high watermark setback, you're in that shore impact zone, you're really close to the edge, setback is a hundred feet for generally most, most places, so.
Okay, thank you.
Something to help out.
This is Tim, I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve.
And I adopt staff's findings of facts.
Oh, yes, we needed that as well, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So we do have a motion and a second to accept this variance. As stated with the staff's finding of facts, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Larry, I also vote aye. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Variance application thirty-nine V dash twenty-five by Ryan Ragus and Austin Foss. Government lot seven, section fifteen, township one forty-one, range thirty-two, Akeley Township on Eleventh Kerwing Lake. A recreational development lake parcel zero one one five zero one nine hundred. Applicants are requesting variances from part one, section nine oh one of the shoreline management ordinance. From the requirement to prohibit intensive vegetative clearing within the shore impact zone and the requirement that ground layer and the understory of native vegetation be preserved in the shore impact zone so that a non-vegetated beach area can be created. Part two, article five and sections five oh six, seven oh one and seven oh two of the shoreline management ordinance. From the requirements to prohibit more than one guest cottage being located on the property. That guest cottages cannot be located within the one hundred-foot ordinary high watermark structure setback. That a guest cottage cannot exceed fifteen feet in height. And to put two non-conforming structures whose use has been discontinued to new proposed uses as guest cottages. Part three, section seven oh one and seven oh two of the shoreline management ordinance from the requirements to prohibit non-conforming structures whose uses have been discontinued from being maintained and put to new uses. And part four, section seven oh one and seven oh two of this SMO. From the requirements to prohibit alteration of a non-conforming structure whose use has been discontinued by placing a deck on the structure. State your name and addresses for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Austin Foss, three hundred MP Avenue North in Fargo, North Dakota. Here as an owner of two oh four nine eight six Harland Trail.
Yep.
Ryan Ragus, same.
Very good, thank you. Again, we have several things here to look at. I'll bring it up to the board again, do we want to take them on one at a time and discuss them, or tackle them as a unit?
I think the last process worked for us.
Okay, so we'll be looking at these in sections?
Yeah, I think so.
Sure.
I'll just open for public comment right away. Seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a few questions before we get started on one by ones?
Yes.
Okay, just a few applicant, just questions for the applicants here, you purchased the property December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay, are you currently residing at the property, no, cause you're residing in the other place?
Yep.
What structures have water hooked up to them currently? Bathrooms, sinks, kitchens, whatever?
Um, so that would be seven structures currently.
So seven of them have.
Yes.
Water lines to them. Water lines to them and exiting.
Yep.
Okay. Can you tell me which seven they are?
Yes, so that would be, it'd be A, B, C, D, E, F, and L.
So which one doesn't then?
That would be G, H, I, and I believe, yes, thank you.
H and I.
G, H, I, J, K, and then M and N on the south portion as well.
Okay. So A, B, C, okay, got that. So F and L, okay. L does too, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so A, B, C, D, E, F, and L.
Yep.
Okay. And so when you purchased the property, you already knew the septic was non-compliant?
Yes.
But you failed to do anything with it yet?
We, right. We, so last year, we attempted to, we've been working with a septic design company. They submitted a permit. They told us we needed a variance or other means to get that permit, just because they're non-conforming structures. Truthfully, time got away with us, and so we've been trying again this year with changing those structures to be more conforming. Still needed a variance, and so now we're, we're here.
Okay, so when you went to take care of the septic.
Yep.
And you're looking at holding tanks as far as this new proposal goes, but if you were to fix the septic, as is, they said no, or are they saying?
They, yeah, we told them, yeah, because so, so the original permit application that they had was for all of these to be cabins.
Okay.
And we were told that that's non-conforming, we can't hook up to the septic, so we can't do, or redo the septic until we get a variance.
I understand. Okay, perfect. With holding tanks and your proposals, are you looking at this still to be seasonal use only?
Yes.
Did they give you any indication on these two holding tanks, how often they would have to be maintained, how often they have to be dumped?
We were hoping, so we designed it to hopefully be once a year.
Only once a year?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that answers my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
This is Veronica. May I ask staff a question? Sorry, thank you. Eric, because as the applicant has described, when they got the, or when the non-conforming, or when the violation letter was submitted, and because they are, that is no longer in use, they can't do anything, they couldn't even try to bring the septic into compliance at that time? I mean, like, they could have done this variance thing a year ago instead then? Is that the only change? Or is that the only thing that they could have done?
And variance could have been submitted sooner, yes.
Earlier, quite earlier, okay.
This is Ken. As we look at this, this is now viewed as a residential lot, right? As we go forward.
That, that's the default permitted use of the property.
Yeah. And so a normal, I'll call residential lot, would have a cabin and possibly one guest cabin would be the standard thing that we would allow, at least for the size of this lot. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And possibly accessory structures, but in this case, all of the ones that exist do not meet the hundred-foot setback, if I look at it.
Correct.
This is Veronica speaking for the applicants. When you purchased the property in December of twenty twenty-three, what were your plans?
The plans were to have the main lodge be the main cabin, and then these five lodges just be guest cabins for our guests, was the original plan. We didn't know, you know, we had not looked at the ordinance for that, so that, you know, plans have kind of changed since then. But, yeah, so the original plan was to have the, so the, so A, B, C, D, and E were the original resort cabins, so those were the guest cabins, and then L was their main cabin. And so that, again, we originally, the thought process was buying the property, creating that main cabin into our seasonal cabin, and then the five being guest cabins.
This is Veronica speaking. Eric, if they wanted to go forward as a resort owner, basically, could they do so by getting a conditional use permit?
Yes, a conditional use permit would be required, and then as part of that, we would have to make sure that what's there would comply with density requirements, which that analysis hasn't occurred.
Have you thought about all of your options instead of getting rid of something?
No, so I guess, so if we, right, if we were to go back to resort, I mean, that, that means we still, we would have to be a business, right? That, we would, they would, and so that's, I guess that, that's part of the option is like, why we're pursuing this is because we don't necessarily want to be a business. We don't necessarily want to be a resort. This was just, again, hoping that it was a family cabin, but yes, I, I know that that is an option to essentially Airbnb out the cabins or become a resort.
Okay, because I guess I misunderstood when you said you wanted to keep the one main cabin, then you want to have guest cabins for the others. I assumed you meant you wanted to have.
No, no, sorry, yeah, just for, just for our, like, family and friends, as, like, invited guests out. That was, that was the original plan.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's okay. I just, clarification there.
Yep.
This is Larry. This just puts us in a really awkward position because this.
It's a unique property.
Frankly, it violates just about everything that the shoreline ordinance has out there. At the same time, we understand you bought the property hoping to be able to use it, so we're trying to figure out how to make that happen.
Did you do a public comment?
I did, yes.
Okay.
I haven't been on this board that long, so I don't know all the ins and outs of this, so I guess I'm counting on my fellow board members to, to help us go after this, but just understand that this is a challenge for us to try and get this done legally.
I know, I know. I realize that. Thank you.
I have some thoughts, but I don't know if you guys.
Go ahead, Ken.
Well, I've thought about this a lot, and I think you're right, it's very problematic. First of all, the request for any shoreline vegetation removal is a non-starter.
Okay.
For a residential property, you're allowed a twenty-by-fifteen rec area, which is about what you have, so any attempts to or requests for making that little beach area any larger, which was about twenty feet, would be a non-starter for me. The other thought I had is, is, you know, you, there's a basic, the basic cabin, which you, when I think, put a deck on, I think that's something we would normally reasonably allow. A garage is something that generally people would like. So it comes down to what about those five other structures? And I know you'd like to keep two of them for guest cabins. You really only are allowed one by ordinance, so my, my thoughts, I'll propose, since they're only five hundred, about five hundred square feet each, you're allowed one at seven hundred square feet. Given the complexity of things, what I put on the table is, you get to keep two of them, and the other three structures have to be demolished. So whether it's the two you pick, or whether D looked like a, D and, and B are both more than, they are not in the shore impact zone, so what I would suggest would be B and D, and then A, C, and E have to be demolished. Office, game room, sauna, that's just more structures, not normally on a residential thing. So that's, that's a thought I have. What do you do with this bag that we have? And that comes down to a main cabin and a guest cabin. I'd be, I would be supportive of keeping two of those as guest cabins, but the other three structures would have to go. So I don't know what the rest of you think. If we're going to move forward, just deny the whole thing, so.
This is Tim. Do any of those other structures have showers in them?
Just F. So F currently is the, it's a garage and also two shower rooms, but they are over a cesspool, which is highly illegal.
Right.
So those are being demolished.
Right. So the lodge, none of those have toilets or a bathroom?
Yeah, so the, so all five cabins have a toilet and sink, no showers.
Okay. Okay. Myself, I'm on the same page as Ken. I was thinking more like removing the C, E, and D, and then removing F, of course.
Yeah, F, I believe, was already proposed to be removed.
Yeah.
By the applicant. I definitely, I like the idea of retaining A and B if we're keeping two, just because it is closer to, at least the combination of the two is closer to the eight hundred or seven, you know, our guest cottage requirement. But, yeah, that, I would be in favor of removing C, D, and E, along with those, if they wanted to retain two. Eric, could this at all be a planned unit, a PUD? No? Yes?
Ken, just, why I, I was in maybe B and D, one is that D is outside the shore impact zone, and it's three bedrooms versus two. I thought they might prefer that. That was my only thought, but it's.
Sure.
Could be their choice which ones they'd want to do, so. But clearly, if they're going to, the two are going to be on the same holding tank, you probably want them close together.
Right, yeah, just, and also just for clarification, sorry, commissioners, F is a garage, so we were, we were planning on keeping that structure as well. It's just the shower portions of those would be taken out.
Okay, those were the ones over the cesspool?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, well, you keep the garage still, right?
Yes, yep, yep.
I'm, that, I, I think that's what I was okay with. Well, that was my only thought, Veronica, why, why they asked for A and B, and I thought, well, D is three bedrooms versus two, and it's seventy feet from the lake versus the other one, so.
Right.
I'm indifferent to.
Sure.
Which, which of the two get kept?
Eric is looking up some plan, some PUD information for me?
I'm not sure of the answer.
Okay.
Due to the fact we're dealing with a discontinued non-conforming use, so I'd have to check with legal counsel to see if that could be applied to be converted to a PUD or, because it's going to be predicated on existing dwellings and.
Right.
Since they.
Wouldn't want to go forward with this unless we had more information possible.
Aren't technically able to be used that way. I don't know if that conversion is a possibility or not.
Possibility, yeah. This is Veronica speaking for the applicants. I was just asking him a question, again, about a planned unit development, which doesn't mean it has to go to public or whatever, but it can still be private, you know?
Right.
In order for you to try to retain as many structures as you can.
Right.
That might be an option that you want to seek some information for. If that was the situation, though, I would recommend tabling the application so that advice can be given, not only for us from legal standpoint, but for you as well, before we would make a decision to deny something or that approve, and then you'd have to remove a couple buildings, you know?
Right.
It just depends on what all you're looking at.
Right, so, yeah, so I, I think that was my, leading into my question, so, right, if the commission does, right, deny us three buildings, we could not then go for, you know, becoming a resort or pursuing other means? Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Eric can give you guidance on, say, once we act upon something, if they were to go against it or want to object to it, what's the, what is their route there?
Well.
Appeal, sort of?
But the, you know, if, if, whatever the board, if they would take action tonight, any conditions placed on that would only apply if you were to exercise the variance, so.
Okay.
If you didn't act on the variance, then you wouldn't have to abide by the conditions.
Okay, yeah, and that's, and that's what I, it wouldn't be us appealing. I was just wondering if, so if we were to remain a residential property, we would have to abide by the, the commission. If we decided to pursue another angle, then it would be different, right? I, I guess I'm saying, is it okay to, you know, continue on with this conversation, you know, deny, you know, whatever the commission decides, and then have that information if we do, you know, continue down this path of residential, but, but still could potentially pursue other avenues? Is that, I guess that's what I'm asking.
And I'll let Eric or, and, and, you know, Chair give you that information, but you still have the non-compliant violation of the septic.
Right, of the, right, and that's.
That's a year and a half old already.
Right.
That's a big violation there, too, so, I mean, you do have that to contend with, so, but they can.
What violation?
The septic is non-compliant from a year and a half ago.
Yeah. Eric, do you have any sense of, if they were going to pursue a PUD variant, if they could, and you had to do the density calculations, it's not obvious all those structures, because it would still remain based on that. I mean, I don't, I don't, you pretend to know how to do the calculations. Do you have any, any sense? Because I sort of see it going in a direction of either, you know, put this on hold and let them pursue that as an alternative and come back, or kind of approve where we're headed here, but that wouldn't make sense then if they wanted to turn around and do the other thing. I don't think we want to act on it if they wanted to choose another path, right?
From a density standpoint, I think the prop, the property's probably large enough for two residential lots, and so the threshold to be able to be a PUD is five units. So if they could apply for that in a conversion, it's up to the county board what number they feel would be appropriate, and if they would not find that five units were appropriate, then it wouldn't be able to operate as a PUD.
Yeah.
So that's a state requirement.
Oh, that's right. You've got to have five units, right? Yes, okay. Would five include the, the main cabin?
It'd be five dwellings, whatever structures would be used for that.
This is Veronica speaking. How long did it operate from the previous owners as, as what's pictured? As a.
Resort?
Yep.
A long time. I couldn't tell you when it began.
Very long time.
They've been operating since the sixties.
Okay.
The earliest we found was a sixty-two, nineteen sixty-two permit. Eighty years, no, sixty years.
So I guess at this point, I'll throw it back to you guys. You kind of get a feel for where we're going with this.
Right, right.
And, and I think that's probably where we will come down. Do you want to pursue something else, and we tabled this today, or do you want us to make our decision and you decide from there?
Eric should explain that if we table it, what the options are for table.
We've got some time.
Yeah.
I mean, sort of without the septic.
Well, we've got the sixty-day rule that we have to abide by, so we have to take action on the application within sixty days of the application date, or we can extend our review to a hundred and twenty days from the application date. There's also the ability for you as the applicants to sign a waiver that would grant additional time. that would grant additional time for the board to consider and act on the application, and that could be an indefinite extension of time, or you could set a specific date to which you would give them an extension. Um, so those would be the options for tabling, and then, um, you know, if, if the board wanted to have the information as far as whether a PUD conversion is a possibility, that's something I'd have to inquire with legal counsel on, and hopefully I would have that by next month. But, you know, if I do get the information, it's doubtful I'll get it in time to allow the applicants to know if that's an option, and then for them to have time to, you know, have anything new for you, uh, by next month.
And this is Veronica speaking. Question with the septic, how does that affect their non-compliant septic and deadlines? And that's already been passed for you?
It's not, at this point, we're, that's far enough already in arrears that it's not gonna be that big of a difference.
Plus, it'll be snowing and not be, be used here pretty soon, anyway.
I, I guess, Veronica speaking, just for information-wise, yeah, I think it's just depending on where you were, when you purchased the property, what your intentions were, sounded like you wanted to retain as much as you could.
Right.
And now you're here in front of us, and we're like, we're gonna cut, cut, cut because of the situation that you're in with the residential lot, that it is, has become. I, obviously, if it's been a resort since the sixty, sixties, and you wanna kind of keep it that way with family or however, you know, I would suggest you take a route, or try to at least see your options before we, you know?
Yeah, I agree with that.
And the other side of this is, obviously, I don't know what your intent was to get things done yet this fall, but it's probably gonna nix all that.
Probably not, yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say, as long as it's okay that we're probably looking at another year until that septic becomes, because what we've been told is there, probably end of October is when they're, they can't come out here anymore, so.
Yeah, and this is Veronica speaking. You don't have to wait that long for the other documents to take place. You know, if you're gonna go one route or another, you can take care of doing all the paperwork during the winter time.
Right, right, during that, yes, yes, yep, yep.
So that you can be prepared for springtime.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it's okay with the...
Right, it's gonna be twenty twenty-six before you possibly get that septic.
Right.
This is Tim speaking. Did you talk to your designer at all about, uh, where he may put a system? Uh, even talking experimental or through variance and, and, because that's why, another reason I was choosing to take out D, 'cause that's the location I would consider.
Oh.
Because of setback and...
Okay. For an experimental type sort of?
Yeah, so, I, I think in the application, there is design drawing. So, they're, they're proposing where the existing tank is, so they would just replace that, um, with a, a holding tank. And then I believe it would be on the west side of J would be the other one, which would have connected to E and L. So, yeah, so what we were proposing is we were going to connect the septic to A and B and E and L, and then, uh, C and D would not, would not be...
For holding tanks only?
Right.
Right, but what my colleague is explaining to you is that you might have other options for different types of drain fields or different types of septic systems.
Yes, yeah, yep, and, and we, he did get, yes, he did give us the other options, who they were just more, a lot more expensive. Yeah, which is why we went with this route.
Pumping is awful expensive.
Pumping is stuff expensive, too, yeah, we did...
When the toilet's leaking.
Yeah, we did, uh, we did the math and we're pursuing this, but yes, I, at a certain point, it was going to pay for itself, we just can't afford the upfront cost.
Okay, in the interest of getting done sometime tonight, would you, or your preference be that we table it tonight then, or?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
You can just table it for the sixty-day period, or, or, uh,
Yeah.
Or get them to waive and let it six months or something?
Well, we're, in doing the hundred and twenty day calculations, we could go as far out as the November meeting. That would be the last meeting that you could take action on it unless they would choose to sign a time extension to grant more time, but I would think by November, we'd be able to find out whether a PUD conversion's a possibility, and if they, if so, if they have interest in that.
I think that.
Okay.
Okay. And we'll, and I'll be in contact with you, Eric, on that, or, okay, perfect, thank you.
Yep, once I find that information out, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is Larry. I would move then that we table this with the one hundred and twenty day extension. Then I need a second. I'm assuming this needs to be a full-blown motion? Okay.
This is Veronica. I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table, um, this variance application. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken?
I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And Mr. Larry, I also vote aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I need to take a five-minute recess.
Okay, this one's gotta be kept aside.
Yeah.
Goes on mic.
Two and a quarter acre size lot size exclusive of the road right of way. Um, state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name's Luke Carter. I'm the authorized agent for this, uh, application. And my address is one four seven six six, one hundred nineteenth Avenue, Park Rapids, Minnesota, five six four seven zero.
Very good. Thanks, Luke. And a brief description of the variance you're applying for?
Um, we have a, my, my parents have a large agricultural field and then, uh, between two roads, but there's a small sliver on the other side of the road, uh, totaling three point oh four acres, but without right of way, it totals two acres. Um, we would like to, uh, apply to get that as its own separate parcel.
Okay. Any questions from the board right of way?
I think public comment.
Okay. Um, we'll open to public comment at this time? No, use the other podium, please.
Sorry.
Write your name and address and.
Do we both go or one of?
One of, sorry. So my name is Sarah Luther. Um, my address is one two zero two one, one hundred fifty second street. Um, we were in our driveway that day that you guys came out. Um, just, uh, we did write our letters. I won't, I'll try not to repeat anything that we had put in the letter, but, um, just know that we have been, uh, speaking with the Carters for about a year, Luke and his wife, and, um, have offered to purchase this, this small piece of land. Um, privacy reasons, um, just, you know, we have, we have been in contact and offered to, to purchase it and, um, we just feel personally that it's right there, you know, it's, we'll be driving right by him all the time and safety issues and stuff, so we are opposed to the variance. Thank you.
I'm Charlie Lee. I live at one five, one three, four, one hundred nineteenth Avenue, uh, Park Rapids, Minnesota. Um, I am also a joining neighbor. Um, to the proposed lot and we, I agree with Sarah, my other neighbor, um, we do live in the, this proposal lot, it would be non-conforming lot that would impede on, we have, well, we put it in the letters, but the safety is one. The, uh, I had it here before I came up here and got nervous, I knew what I was gonna say. Uh, it's affected the character of the neighborhood. We do live in the country because we like to have our own space. This non-conforming lot would impede on that space. Um, there's plenty of other property that they own that would not impede on that, uh, character of our, uh, place and, uh, and also the safety with it being close to the road and so on and so forth. Snow plowing, I think, would, I imagine would be an issue. If it's in another township, um, that would have ordinances, I think it would be a lot harder to get this permit too. Um, Straight River does not, so that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing done, I will close public comments.
This is Mike. Uh, in looking at your survey here, it is way out of performance with the standards here. You've only got ninety-two feet really to work with. Uh, I don't know what size house you're planning on building. We haven't seen anything about that. Even if you're off the setback, your house is gonna be fairly close to that road right of way. And the ordinance calls for forty-nine thousand square feet. Uh, my calculation is what I did. I only come up with forty-five thousand, so I, I don't see, I, I mean, it's, it's a unique piece of property, but it, I don't like to see the way this is going myself.
This is Tim speaking. Um, I have no problem with it being there with the road separating it. And ninety feet is plenty to work with if you build something that meets the setbacks. I checked out the soils opinion from the compliance inspection. It's all medium sand. It'll take the least amount of size of anything to build there. Because it drains good and the system, septic system will be small. And as far as, I understand the privacy when you have it like that, but there's a piece of property right there that if I owned it, I'd build on it. So that's where I stand.
This is Ken. Um, the, the two people that commented, um, the point of being in the country and kinda isolated. Eric, can you go back to the previous thing you had on there, the thing? Which, it seems to me that, that vegetation that's there and the layout, um, both of those properties are screened. Lee over here and, and the Luthers down here are screened. Um, what is your, why, I'm concerned about what, what is it you're concerned about if someone were to build, which most likely will be? I can't, nobody else can see it.
North, uh, west corner?
By that.
No, right here, that, to the, if I look at the screen, at the left of the access road.
Where is airways?
Yeah, that area in there is about a half acre, if you do the math. Uh, and I think that's where he indicated you might put a structure. So first question, what kind of home, living structure do you intend to build there?
Uh, the current plan is to build a, uh, movable tiny home and then, uh,
What?
A movable tiny home, uh, tiny home that, that can be moved from place to place if needed. Um, and then in the future possibly to build a, uh, permanent, permanent dwelling with a traditional foundation.
So that in, that initial structure would in fact, you'd, you'd have to put in a septic and a well with it, right?
Yeah, yes.
How large would that structure be?
Uh, the estimated footprint I have right now is thirty-six by twelve foot.
Thirty-six by?
Thirty-six by twelve feet.
Like a large camper almost.
Oh, yes, sir.
But the structure would have to be built, uh, the ordinance anyway, so that's immaterial.
This, uh, just, this is Veronica speaking. It is right outside shoreland, so we have no jurisdiction on what gets built.
I'm sorry.
Ken, this is right outside of shoreland, so we don't have any jurisdiction on what gets built.
Yo, I.
So I was just helping with, with, uh, Tim.
Well, this is Veronica speaking. Um, I understand the neighboring properties. However, I agree with what Ken said. There's several vegetative layers there that separate both property owners with all this house here, the southern one, the Luthers have a lot of tree vegetation before their driveway gets to their home. And the Lees have that tree-lined vegetative buffer as well. I did see maybe a couple during lot views, I saw a couple of there maybe like, um, vehicles parked out there, but I, otherwise I didn't see where the house was located. Um, I agree with the applicant's, this, you know, wanting to separate this section of the property. You're not gonna wanna give up your agriculture. That's your money maker. So, you know, you're not gonna wanna give up any of that, cuz that's the producer. If you could build a home or a small home, as the applicants are stating, on this section and it fits, the only, it meets the setback, it meets all the requirements minus the road right-of-way parts that's taken away from it, along with that easement road for the people to get into their neighboring property. So I, it has, it meets everything else. It has septic system site evals on there. You know? Straight River does not have any ordinance or any township zoning, so.
The structure could be built to the right of way.
Correct.
Maybe just one other thought I have. I realize that, you know, the amount of area, all that kinda stuff, uh, looks like it could be fit in there. Still to me in the long haul, that piece of property doesn't appear to be the most desirable by any stretch of the imagination for building a, a permanent reasonable-sized home. Have children and so on, close to the road. So, I realize those aren't necessarily things we go by, but, uh, it's not cl- clear to me it's the best choice.
This is Tim speaking. I think pretty much actually if, if they wanted to, whoever it is could build it right now. Just get a permit and do it. It's just being able to separate it from the agricultural.
And to clarify, we are, we are actively planning on building this and intend to go forward with it. If we don't meet the variance, uh, my parents, Anthony and Linda Sue are willing to separate a quarter acre on the other side of the road to meet the lot size for dividing.
Do they need to buy that to be con, I thought it had to be contiguous.
Yeah, I, I don't, I think the road.
The road is just an easement, so they could do that, but.
We, we would rather not have like a twenty-foot strip on the other side of the road and that's, that's the purpose for this variance.
That's the money maker.
This is Larry. Um, what happens with the other half on the other side of the driveway? Does that somebody, somebody propose to build something over there?
Oh, we have no plans to build anything on the other side, uh, using mainly as a yard, uh, possibly gardens, but, um, not, not a permanent dwelling or, or building of any type.
I would probably build a storage shed over there if it was me.
I, I was gonna say, if we put any building there, it would be a, it would be a shed, um, but we don't have any plans to.
Any other comments? I would entertain a motion.
This is Veronica. I make a motion to approve the application. And I have, um, findings of facts prepared. Is, number one is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls. Yes, the overall lot size is three point zero six acres. However, because of the road right-of-ways, um, on one fifty-two, one hundred fifty-two Avenue and one nineteenth Avenue, the lot area excluding the right-of-ways is only two point zero acres, so it's just shy of that minimum two point two five lot size exclusion of right-of-ways. Number two is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by an official control. Also I have for, I'm gonna back up one more time for number one. The applicant's own that hundred and twenty acre tract, so the township road that runs through the end of the property in the east-west direction does not run along the south edge and south end of the subject property, which leaves that small portion on the south side of the road. Okay, number two, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by an official control? Yes. The proposed lot meets the forty-nine thousand square foot buildable area minimum as it has one point seven acres of buildable area. Where it falls shy of meeting the ordinance requirement in terms of lot area excluding the road right-of-way. The overall lot size would be three oh six as stated before, and with excluding the right-of-ways, it's two point zero. Creating a new tract utilizing the land on the south side of the road for a residential structure is reasonable. And again, that said structure, tract falls outside of shoreline management area. Number three is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior property owners. The property is unique as the majority of it is agricultural and will remain such. The proposed tract has the two right-of-way setbacks and an easement to contend with. So it was yes. Number four, will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of locality? Yes, there are neighboring residential structures located on both sides, both southern and southwestern sides. Correct, southwest?
Um, uh, yes.
And then number five, I will adopt the staff's findings.
This is Tamwell, second, the motion.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to accept this variance, um, based on the staff, uh, the finding of facts that Veronica gave. Uh, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken?
I vote nay.
Mike?
Mike, I vote nay.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Larry. I also vote aye. Thank you very much. The resolution passes.
Thank you.
All right. Variance application forty-one dash V dash twenty-five by the Schwint Family Trust, government lot seven, southeast corridor, the southwest corridor, section ten, township one thirty-nine, range thirty-three. Crow Wing Lake Township on third Crow Wing Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel zero six one zero zero one nine hundred. Applicant is requesting a variance from section seven oh one of the shoreline management ordinance for a proposed expansion of a structure devoted to a non-conforming use. Name and address, please.
Yep. Mark Frank, authorized agent for Schwint Family Trust. Uh, address is two three four two two, state eighty-seven.
Very good. Thank you. And a brief description of your variance, please.
Yeah, uh, as we talked about, went at the site visit, you know, we're looking at just, um, moving the, uh, well pump along with the, um, salt for the softener outside the lodge area to help with, um, mitigate moisture and everything inside and serviceability, cuz its current location is, uh, in a tight quarters.
Okay. Um, any public comments? Seeing no public comment, we'll close public comments. Any questions from the board?
No.
Pretty simple, straightforward, meets setbacks.
This is Veronica speaking, just for, um, statement-wise, this non-conforming resort use that predates the ordinance operates on the property. And so anytime, any type of enlarging the structures, uh, variance must be um, approved. So it's pretty, like Ken said, it's pretty straightforward. Um, we understand the need.
Appreciate that.
Uh, the request also meets all the setbacks and will not be, uh, noticed from the lake.
All right, this is Larry. I would make a motion that we accept this variance and accept staff's finding of facts.
This is Ken, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and accept, second to accept this variance. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And Larry, I also vote aye.
Appreciate, thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right. Variance application forty-two dash V dash twenty-five by Thomas Jubarian, lots five and six block three, Bonavista Beach. Section nineteen, township one forty-one, range thirty-four, Lake Emma Township on Potato Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel sixteen forty-eight zero one five hundred. Applicant is requesting a variance from sections five oh two two and nine oh two, the shoreline management ordinance for proposed dwelling to be placed within the hundred-foot ordinary high-water mark setback and for grading in a steep, steep slope that exceeds permissible volume. Name and address, please, and a brief description of your variance.
Uh, my name is Tom Jubarian. This is my wife Laura. Address is nine zero two five Archer Court North, Maple Grove, Minnesota. Uh, looking to make this our new permanent homes in the future. Our variance applic- application is for, as you mentioned, uh, building a single-family home, uh, within the hundred-foot setback at seventy feet from the high-water mark, uh, as well as, uh, the grading of the steep slope running through the property. Reason behind the, uh, variance request, uh, is that being closer to the lake at seventy feet, uh, allows for our dwelling to be built. If it was at the hundred-foot, uh, setback, it would not fit, uh, within the lot based on how it pies back towards the road. Um, also with how the, um, hill runs through the property, being closer actually reduces our amount of, uh, grading that we would have to do, uh, by over half, um, allowing more trees to be kept, uh, and less dirt to be moved. Uh, we feel that this mitigates, uh, the environmental impact as much as possible. Um, thirdly, uh, both of the neighboring properties are closer than the hundred-foot setback. Um, one being the west side being thirty feet from the water and the, uh, east side being about seventy feet from the water. Uh, so allows both of those not to be in our line of sight when we're looking out our window towards the lake then.
I'll go ahead and open to public comment. Seeing no public comment, we will close that. Any comments from the board?
Oh yeah, this is Ken. Um, try to help me understand your, your vision of if you had to move it back to the hundred-foot setback, not the deck, but the house itself, what, what the impact is to, um, the amount of, um, material that's gonna have to move, et cetera. To, to, help me understand how, how extensive, uh, the impact is that has driven you to wanna have it at seventy feet.
Um, so as you may have seen when we were out at the, uh, property on Thursday, uh, moving that entire structure back thirty feet, uh, would basically take out two-thirds of that hill coming through the property, uh, rather than just about.
Talking just eighteen feet, just the house back to seven, to a hundred. The deck could still, I'm, I'm envisioning the deck still being able to extend forward, but the main house, so that's eighteen feet you'd have to move back.
Moving the house to a hundred, but then the deck would be at eighty-eight, you're saying?
Yeah.
So, yeah, again, it would be eighteen feet further of, um, up to ten feet of dirt, which is, uh, significantly more and a lot of mature trees would then be also impacted there too. Uh, so we're, we're trying to mitigate, um, the amount of dirt and the amount of mature trees that would come out of the property. As kinda, as, as we saw at the, at the lot, um, where our corner of our garage is at, on the far, uh, would be southwest, uh, corner of that. Um, there's really only about a quarter of that hill that we're impacting, rather than probably three-quarters if we moved another eighteen feet back. So in, in our, um, estimation, it would be a significant amount more.
It's kinda right obvious to me that if we're tearing part of the hill aside to tear a little bit more of it, uh, and to get the setback from the lake, might be worth the move. Just my thoughts.
It may be, um, good to note too that there was a previous variance in nineteen eighty-two on the property. Um, for one of the reasons that we had mentioned, uh, as well, his was line of sight at that point. Um, still remains the same. Those structures were in the same spots, uh, in nineteen eighty-two as they are now.
This is Veronica speaking. Eric, can you please pull up the aerial map so we can see the neighboring properties? And I did review the prior nineteen eighty-two variance. It's also for a much smaller house, thirty-two by thirty-six, single story.
Right.
Height of structure, what, twelve feet, maybe? Maybe sixteen? I can see that at a seventy-foot ordinary high-water mark setback. Versus thirty-five or thirty-four.
This is Mike. Uh, have you looked at the impact? Uh, all your roofs seem to be going to the front and then down on the backside. Uh, it looks like a lot of that water's gonna end up on the neighbor's property, huh?
We do have a stormwater management plan within the variance application as well.
Can you tell me where those drain, those drains are located?
Um, our, our builder is here as well, Mark, um, and we discussed this with him, that, um, the drains would be on that west side of the property, uh, so.
Were they marked while we were there? Cuz I didn't see anything marked that showed where your drains would be. I mean, how they would be, the tanks.
Not the gutters off, yeah, not the gutters off the house, no.
Well, no, but, I mean, cuz you've, in your stormwater management plan, it says you have tanks that will be, um,
Referated, yes.
Yep. Yeah, and do you know the size of those tanks?
Uh, I, I believe the numbers were in the plan if I remember right.
Right, cuz at a one-inch rainfall, it said it was gonna have two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight gallons of water that would come off in a one-inch rainfall. Generally for a stormwater management plan, we'd like to see three-inch rainfall. So if we just triple that even, that's a lot of water going in your tanks. I just wanted to see if that was gonna be adequate sizing.
Yeah.
Do you know how many tanks there were gonna be?
I believe there was going to be two.
But you don't know the location, the underground?
On the west side of the house.
Just on the west side, just?
Like where the garage is at, off that west side there. Between, so between where the house and the garage there where the hundred and twenty degree angle is.
Okay. With your current proposal, do you know how many square feet the residential unit is with all three levels?
There's just two levels. It's just a walkout and one level.
And then so you have a vaulted ceiling?
Correct.
Giving it the illusion of three?
Yeah. Um, and the total square footage is around twenty-eight hundred livable.
How big was the footprint of the house? Thirty by sixty?
Thirty by sixty.
It's less than sixty, cuz, yeah, it should be fifty-five, I believe.
The garage is almost three thousand square feet.
No, garage is just twelve hundred square feet, twelve hundred square feet.
Yeah.
The house plus the garage?
Yes.
Is about three thousand, right?
Um, al- almost four thousand, so it's twenty-eight hundred or so, twenty-eight hundred or so on the house and then twelve hundred on the garage.
Conning the living area, Ken, both levels.
Oh, uh, yeah, I'm thinking footprint.
Yep.
I'm trying to compare it, you know, the previous variance was for something about eleven hundreds square feet and this is about triple. You know, it's an undersized lot and at the hundred-foot setback, it's bo- it's supposed to be a hundred fifty feet wide, it's only a hundred twenty or so. This is an awful large home for that lot. It's a beautiful-looking home, but it's, uh, awful large for that lot.
We, I mean, we do feel like it fits nicely in there, with the way it's laid out, um, giving that, you know, twenty or so foot buffer on the east side and, uh, twelve foot on the west side with the back of the garage. And all of that is contained with a poured concrete wall, so there's no issue with erosion or anything of that hill either.
Because of the shape of the lot, if the home were moved further back, it would be more difficult than to, um, much more difficult and, and maybe not even feasible to enter the garage as you would want to enter.
But a garage could have been put on, attached to it on the end and drive straight into it without touching the hill.
This is Veronica speaking. I, in my opinion, just, this house is too large for this lot. This, you know, This, you know, they did mention that the previous variance was for, in nineteen eighty-two, at that seventy-foot ordinary high-water mark. But again, it was in line with the neighboring properties, the sizing, the thirty-two by thirty-six foot, and most likely single-story. I did not review that part, so I can't have that for a definitive answer. But just by the neighboring properties, the east side, as been discussed in the staff report, twenty-five by thirty-four. And there's one that's another neighboring property, forty-four by thirty. You know, they're only eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet or thirteen-hundred-and-twenty square feet. The house, the variance that's approved is only for eleven-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet, more something along the size of the lot that fits. The request here is approximately, like Ken mentioned, almost triple the size. It's a beautiful, beautiful home. I agree with that. I just think it's too big for this piece of property. Especially when you want to have something that's thirty-four feet high at the seventy-foot mark, or even with the walkouts and the decks. The footprint alone is much larger than I would like to see at that level.
It is just fourteen-hundred square feet as far as that footprint of that house, so it's not, we're not talking about triple the footprint. That, the footprint is just there. It's two levels at fourteen-hundred square feet.
Yeah. With the garage and the house, you're over-doubled the size of the variance that was allowed. The variance that was allowed was eleven-hundred-and-fifty-two.
Comment on Veronica's, I agree with the fact that, what you're saying, Veronica, with regards, it is probably oversized for the lot. And it's probably not desirable from that standpoint, but my personal view is I'm not supportive of building something that's non-conforming when there's an alternate. For us to, you know, to allow something new to be built that doesn't meet the hundred-foot setback, when you, when it could be, from my standpoint, is not, is not, I'm not supportive of that. The size, I don't, I think it's too big, but the key thing to me is the setback, making sure. And I'm willing to yield on the, let the deck extend. Maybe that's the trade-off with, that the old variance was there, but the main cabin, I, from my standpoint, I'd like to see back at a hundred feet. And I don't think it has a significant effect on your sidelines. The home to the left, the eddles, they're kinda tucked down below, and the, the, can't even think of the name of the ones on the other side, are kind of a little bit, but you've still got a good hundred-twenty degree of view. And if you look right or left, there's a lot of trees and stuff which probably block your sight more than what any of the structures would be. So I, I don't, I don't buy into the sightline issue. But I do believe the structure should be back at a hundred feet. My thoughts.
This is Tim, and I agree with Ken about that. Being that eighteen feet for the main structure is what you're talking about, moving back. Are you in favor of the garage moving back into that hill like that?
I sort of thought as you're digging into the hill, and when I do dig into the hill, I do think somebody said that you could reorient that garage and come more straight into it and protect that. You know, we could maybe say that, hey, we don't want that garage so much into the hill, but I'm, you know, as long as you're starting to move dirt and gonna change the contour, you might as well, might as well do it all. So, my attitude, anyway.
Yeah, this is Veronica speaking. We visited about, since the driveway that they're utilizing, if it was almost a mirror image, not flip-flopped, but just almost a mirror image, and something obviously reduced in size a little bit, would fit with a little less removal over there. There's still gonna be some, but would be less, at least to come back and meet some, a better setback, to have something. It, it's not in harmony with, in my opinion, it's not in harmony with the general purposes and intent of our controls. Cause, you know, as much as like the nineteen eighty-two one is, and the neighboring properties, it's not, it doesn't quite go with the character of the neighboring properties.
Wouldn't that be any new house, though, that if it's just nicer than the neighboring properties, it wouldn't match that?
I'm not going with the niceness, I'm just going by with the shape and the, just the way the layout itself, it's just much different than the neighboring properties, the characteristics. That's all I was meaning. I wasn't going by pricing, more nice. If you're ready for a motion, I'm ready. I'm prepared.
I am ready.
Okay, this is Veronica. I make a motion that we deny the application, and I have the following findings of facts. Number one is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the controls. No, allowing a thirty-foot structure and height with an attached garage and deck at the seventy-foot ordinary high-water mark is not in harmony with the official intent and controls. Number two is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by an official control. No, the proposed thirty-by-sixty structure with the thirty-by-forty garage and the sixty-by-twelve deck at, with a thirty-four-foot height, again, at the seventy-foot ordinary high water, high-water mark setback is too large for a lot this size with the steep slope and the requested excavation to do so. Number three is the need for the variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior property owners. The lot is a hundred-and-forty-six feet wide at the ordinary high-water mark, a hundred-and-twenty-three wide at the hundred-foot ordinary high-water mark setback, and only eighty-six feet wide at the south rear lot line. Thirty-six thousand square feet in size as far as the tax parcel map, so there is a steep slope area on the west central portion of the lot and between the shoreline and the proposed house location. So that is the unique circumstances, so that is yes. And then number four, will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character and locality? No. The proposed structure will not fit in well with the neighboring dwellings because of its atypical roof lines and the significant larger in size. Again, the cabins on the adjacent lot to the east is a one-story twenty-five by thirty-four, and the other cabin is a forty-four by thirty. And then number five, I will adopt staff's findings of facts.
Do we have a second?
This is Tim. I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to deny this variance with the statement of facts that Veronica quoted. Uh, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And Larry, I also vote aye. Sorry. All right, variance application forty-three-v-25 by Lynette, Lynette Cherry and Carrie Helly. Part of Government Lot Ten, Section Two, Township One Forty-Two, Range Thirty-Two, Steamboat River Township. On, excuse me, on Benedict Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel twenty-four dot oh-two dot oh-two six hundred. Applicants are requesting a variance from Section Nine-O-Two, the Shoreline Management Ordinance, for grading in a steep slope that will exceed permissible volume. Name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Lynette Cherry. My mailing address is six-nine-one-two Ninety-third Street South, Cottage Grove, five-five-zero-one-six. And the parcel in question is at three-one-six-nine-eight Large Pine Trail in La Porte.
Okay, and a brief description of your variance, please?
We would like to build a thirty-six-by-forty-eight pole barn across the street from our address.
And I will open for public comment right away. Seeing no public comment, we'll close public comments. Any questions from the board?
This is Tim. I was recently on the lake, actually looking at the place for sale next to you. But with somebody else, not me. I'm, I'm not interested, but, I noticed a fairly new shed down there next to the lake, and so I just checked it out online there, and I, I didn't see that there was a permit for the shed down by the water.
We just got that, and we didn't realize we needed a permit for it, so we have to look into that.
Yeah, it, it looked bigger than six by eight. Looked like about eight by twelve or fourteen even, maybe. I don't know. How big was it?
I think it's maybe ten by twelve. I'd confirm.
But having said that, I, I see that's a good spot for your, for your building that you've chosen. And you plan on pouring walls?
Yes.
To backfill and use that wall as the garage wall, too?
Yes.
Okay. No more. You ready for a motion or something, or what? Talk about it, or I?
This is Veronica. This seems to be a pretty ideal location for this building, for this accessory structure, in my opinion. It appears that a subdivision was approved a couple of years ago, just so that they could have additional area on the other side of that road, since the road's in the way. It will meet all setback requirements. Most of the excavation's going to be hauled off, and only some of it's gonna be used as backfill. That's what I gather, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, I would entertain a motion.
This is Tim. I'll make the motion to approve. Application forty-three-v-25, with the condition that the violation be remedied before you get...
I'll have to use permit.
You get your permit for building. But my findings of facts, number one is variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls, yes. The proposed structure meets the setback. You won't even be able to see it from the lake. Number two is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by an official control, yes. Storage building is, especially in that little spot there, is gonna be very reasonable. Is the need for variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior property owners? Yes, the topography of the steep grade and in the proposed location, you need to remove dirt to build what you want. Will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of the locality? Yes, the area is made up of residential year-round homes and storage buildings. And number five, I'll adopt the staff's finding.
Do I have a second?
This is Veronica. I second.
You're good. We have a motion and a second to accept this variance, with the condition that the permit be obtained for the other shed. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
It's not so much a permit, but it could be a violation, so just the violation be addressed before.
Or violation, or...
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Uh, Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Larry. I also vote aye. Thank you very much.
Just one quick question. What would need to be done to be within the restrictions or permissible shed?
If the shed is larger than forty-eight square feet, then it has to meet all setbacks, including the hundred-foot setback from the lake.
So it has to be over a hundred-foot setback. Thank you.
If you want a shed there, and you want to use it as a water-oriented structure, then it can be four by eight, forty-eight square feet, and then there's also some other vegetation things that you have to abide by if you want something different there. You know, not knowing where your location is, but if it's within that twenty-foot setback, then that's, I don't know where it's at. I didn't see it, but just saying.
Okay, thank you.
Contact ESO, and they'll tell, give you the right guidance.
You'll probably be out there, won't you, Eric? Pat send somebody there?
Somebody will be going out, yes. Yeah, it won't be me, but...
Now that there's a violation that's been addressed, somebody's gonna go out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, variance application forty-four-v-25 by Andrew Shower. Lots Two and Three, Beltane Shores, Section Seven, Township One Forty, Range Thirty-Two, Nevis Township on Lake Beltane, a recreational development lake, parcel twenty-one dot sixty dot zero-one-two-hundred. Uh, applicant is requesting a variance from Section Seven-O-Two, the Shoreline Management Ordinance, for proposed additions to a non-conforming dwelling located in the shore impact zone. State your name and address for the record, please.
Andrew Shower, two-zero-two-one-zero Foxtrot Trail, Nevis, Minnesota, five-six-four-six-four.
And a brief description of your variance.
Um, would like to add on to the rear of the home, non-lakeside, um, an additional footage on the garage and a master bathroom closet and entryway to their porch of the house.
Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Any questions from the board?
This is Ken. The lowland area to the, would be the right of your home as you face the lake, which is the area where you're non-conforming with regards to ordinary high-water mark. Is that pretty dry right now?
It's never had moisture in it. Um, well, we bought the house in June, but the previous owner said it's never had moisture. It does get some runoff from the road and the cul-de-sac, but it's nothing that stays there. It's just, that's the natural flow of, of water from there. You know, this summer's been abnormally dry as of late, but we and the previous owners never stated that that was an actual, like, swamp or lower, you know, boggy area by any means.
It looked like more natural vegetation than...
You can walk right through it right now. You could, yeah, I could, the kids could ride a bike through it and not have any issue.
But that was what I was trying to get at, that, that seems to be the, well, I guess there's some issues, maybe the house wasn't built where it should have been built originally. But when you look at where the ordinary water line is, or the water line is, I, you know, we could go on the GIS map, but I tried to do that. Your addition on the backside of the house appears to me to be at least a hundred feet from the water line that's there. And that even if the lake did go up, it might push a little water into that, into that area. But I think thirty-three feet is, is a, I shouldn't say exaggeration, but is, it's technically correct, but in terms of, in, in reality, you're much farther from, from that, from, from the lake.
The stairs, I think, and we talked about this, the, the stairs on the front of the deck are now at ninety-two feet from the ordinary high-water mark, and they were at a hundred-plus feet previous to the raising of the ordinary high-water mark when the house was built. And then this area became an issue because of the raising of the ordinary high-water mark. It was never considered anything to... It was never considered anything to do a setback previous to, or when the house was built in nineteen ninety-nine.
I guess my point to the members of the team is that if you look at the reasonable water line, that his proposed additions are probably at least, are close to a hundred feet. Not the thirty-three feet that technically show up, so. I guess that says I'm supportive of the application.
This is Veronica speaking. I'm the same, I reviewed the nineteen ninety-nine land use permit. And after reviewing the site plan, it was apparent that that hundred-foot ordinary high watermark structure setback was from the larger body of water and not that area that looks as though it has the vegetation growing that dries out often. And obviously, since it was back in nineteen ninety-nine, several permits have been pulled between now and then and now. And it hadn't been discovered. Again, I, I looked at all different site plans from multiple land use permit applications from the previous owners and saw that they were all very consistent with that same reading, not off to the side. I'm in agreement that this, these two additions at the rear of the non-lake side of the home are appropriate. And I'm supportive. I don't think there was any ill intentions that it was placed in the wrong spot. I think it was just pulled from the large body of water.
This, yeah, I mean, be quiet here, but the ordinary high watermark previous to the change was, that area we're discussing would have never been in question.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am ready, yes.
This is Ken, I'll make a motion that we accept the application. Forty-four V twenty-five. Findings of fact, is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of official controls? The proposed additions are on the non-lake side of the structure. And all of them meet the hundred-foot setback from a typical water line. Is the property, number two, is the property owner proposing to use a property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by an official control? Larger garage, expanded bathroom, reasonable additions. Three, is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current property owner? The property's on a peninsula, one side is a low area. That creates an ordinary high watermark criteria, non-conformance. But except for very high water times, it would be dry. This area creates the non-conforming setback. Four, will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of the locality? No adjacent homes are affected. And number five, economics are not cited in the applications, a practical difficulty. So that would be a yes also.
All right, we have a motion and a, no, we have a motion and the staff's finding of facts as stated by Ken. Do we have a second?
This is Veronica, I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And Larry, I also vote aye.
Thank you guys.
What is the process to getting a permit? I'll just go in and see, you guys are, is there a timeframe on that or what's the next steps?
You'll need to get them within five years of today's date and just fill out and submit land use permit application for the...
It could be done tomorrow, though we don't have to wait for it to be filed or anything.
I just wouldn't come in right away because staff will need time to find out what the decision was.
Okay, thank you. Have a safe night.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, a decision letter will be mailed to you and then give you the, on what to do, yep.
Sure, we're going to wait for, Tim, come back.
That's my bedtime. Pretty small writing, sorry about that.
It's a big project you've got going out there.
Yeah. Definitely keeps us busy.
This is your headache for the next couple of years or not?
Oh, yeah. Literally, it does give, you have a lot of headaches. Does it usually typically go this late?
Ken?
Okay.
I mean, there's times it goes even longer, so.
Wow.
All the way to ten o'clock?
All right, very good. Variance application forty-five dash V dash twenty-five by Hubbard County Parks. The northwest corridor and part of the northwest corridor, the southwest corridor, section ten, township one forty-two, range thirty-four. Clay Township on Deep Lake, a natural environmental lake. Parcels zero four ten zero zero one hundred and zero four ten zero zero two hundred. Applicant is requesting variances from part one, section seven oh one and seven oh two of the shoreline management ordinance. To put a non-conforming structure whose use was discontinued to a new proposed use and to make structural repairs to the structure. Part two, sections nine oh one and nine oh two of the SMO for intense vegetation removal and grading in excess of permissible volume in a steep slope. And part three, section nine oh three of the SMO for an access road to be located within the one hundred and fifty-foot ordinary high watermark setback. Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Corey Kimball, Land Commissioner for Hubbard County. One oh one Crocus Hill Street, Park Rapids, Minnesota, five six four seven zero.
Brief description of the variance?
Yeah, so, you know, we want to follow the same, same rules as everyone else in the public has to follow. So want to make sure we're doing everything right. First thing, we have three, well, we have three variances. First one is the, the non-conforming structure. We want to turn that big back into use, we want to use that as a maintenance building. Definitely need some roof repairs, we're keeping everything the same size, the same, you know, eaves, everything's going to be, keeping everything the same size. The wall, as you guys probably toured it, I wish I could have been there, but the back wall to the south is, it's been neglected and rain has gotten to it, the mold and rain and whatever else has gotten in there. So hoping to repair that. We hope to use the maintenance shed for storing equipment, keeping people off it and keep it locked up and not getting abused by, by members of the public. We don't plan on doing any maintenance really in there, just a typical change of tires out if, or even tracks for the track four-wheeler. The big thing is, in the wintertime, if we have a snowmobile or a four-wheeler with a ski groomer behind it, we want to bring it in there to let it, let it melt off. So that, as you probably saw, there's some drains. We, we do plan on connecting those drains to the, to a sewer system at some point. So keeping everything in conformity at that, at that level. But for the most part, for right now, we'd like to get that roof replaced before any more damage is done and then that back wall. The second item, do you want me to just go on to the second?
Yeah.
Okay, the second item is, as you stated, to fill a, grade and fill a steep driveway, an existing driveway. We're going to take out two acres of vegetation to get that road a drivable width, twenty-four to thirty feet. So some of that bank's going to be, it's going to be having to be excavated out. What is the numbers? Fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty cubic yards will be excavated and removed. We plan on keeping, you know, on the steep side, the, there's a mesh that we're planning on putting down and then that'll allow for vegetation to grow through it for erosion. Four thousand cubic yards will also have to be placed in areas. And also the, the top layer of class five gravel on that, on that roadway. It's an existing road. It's probably non-conforming right now, so we want to make it, we want to make it conforming to the county specs. And the safe, safety specs to make sure people with, small campers can make it up and down safely. And passable. Third item is, at the bottom of the road, there's a, it encroaches into that one hundred and fifty-foot setback. It encroaches up to a hundred and thirty feet for two hundred and sixty feet of roadway. So it will, the existing road, we would like to use, continue using that existing road and that's what it would, that same path would, it's, it encroaches into that, that setback area, so, within that hundred and thirty feet, so, two hundred and sixty feet of that. Otherwise, everything else is within the hundred and fifty-foot setbacks, including the parking area.
Corey?
Yep.
The, the road that you were talking about, all the digging you got to do. I noticed there's also a bicycle path you're building alongside of it?
Yeah, it's, we aren't planning on any tar right now, maybe in a future phase. But the bicycle path is going to be on the, the side of that, that trail going down.
Because it says, it says here a paved bicycle trail. That's not in your current early plans?
Not in the early, it may be in the CUP once we get that going, but right now, we're planning on just gravel. But maybe three or four years down the road, we will have a tarred bicycle path.
The other question I have for you, when I look at the drawing. And then maybe if you could put it up, Eric, the big one like this.
Sure.
This area, that is kind of lightly shaded, that looks like it would be a much more direct path. Instead of that half a mile or whatever it is down the road, couldn't that be made into a road? Instead of having to tear up the whole long one?
It, it's pretty steep and that's where the power line is, it's a power line right away.
Not the power line, do you think, because there were power lines coming down? Oh, no, it was there, I saw it right along this thing, okay.
Yep, yep, and it, it does get pretty steep in there, coming down. And the other one would be an existing road.
I would assume you bury the power lines anyway, wouldn't you?
Uh, we, we will, that actually, that power line serves the neighboring landowner to the, to the east.
Oh, okay.
Yep, it actually goes, they have an easement right through the property.
Okay.
Their power line easement.
Pretty steep, steeper than the other one?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, it just seemed to me that would, that would be pretty simple to run a right straight in there.
Yep, yeah.
You wouldn't be able to get a trailer in and out through this stretch?
No.
Where the cursor is.
You mean like camping trailers?
Yeah, so, small campers are going to be allowed to go, as the CUP's designed. And they're going to be allowed to go to a camping area designated in the southwest of that lake.
Camping area down here?
Yep, right there.
The main campground. Well, I thought that was probably tent camping because it shows RV camping out by the road.
It's tent camping or, what do they call it, like, the campers in the back of the pickup boxes? Those type, yeah, yep, yep. The, the, one to the east would be pull-through RV sites. Yep. But it's, it's a tough area because there's so much topography. But that existing driveway, I believe, would be the best, best fit at this point. It'd be the least amount of ground disturbance, I guess.
And one thing to point out for the board in regard to part two. When processing the application and doing the notice, I failed to remember that public roads are exempt from the vegetation removal standards in the ordinance. So part two only concerns the grading quantity that's proposed, not, the vegetation removal doesn't require variance when you're dealing with a public road. Part two, the vegetation removal component does not require variance because I forgot that there's an exemption for public roads in the ordinance.
This is Veronica speaking, you mentioned that you're going to be utilizing some netting of some sort that for the, to help with the erosion control and the revegetation part, even though it's, doesn't pertain to this. But, um, quick question was, is are you going to be utilizing any other forms for erosion or control during, before, I mean, during the whole excavation part, like silt fences, waddles, whatever needs to be done just for...
Yes, silt fences, whatever, we'll have it specified in the contractor's plan, what they need to have for erosion control, silt fence. And then post-construction, what they need to plant and hydro seeding or whatever it takes.
Eric, since they're excavating so much in this area, do you, as, from an environmental services standpoint, have you provided them any guidance or anything of what to do or anything like that as far as that particular part? Or that you'd like to see utilized or on this?
I have not, largely because they've been working with an engineering firm that...
That we'll take care of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I should have brought the plans with me. But, yeah, it is, it's laid out pretty, laid out pretty good in that, that plan that, I think I, I think I sent that in, but... Yeah, we'll make sure to address those things.
I don't think I did. Public comment, just so we can, and close public comment. Any other questions?
Uh, I guess I'd just make a, a comment that I'd look into that floor drain there and to the district state plumbing inspector. And whatever he emails you, I would save that in your file. If you don't think you need to put in a flammable waste tank when you have gasoline and equipment in there.
Sure, okay.
Just...
Yep, makes sense, and, yeah, we want to abide by all the...
Then you had found a fuel oil tank there on the site.
Right.
Well, there's vent piping for...
Yep, I believe there is one and Chip actually started to get that abandoned. Yeah, there's some paperwork we have to fill out, but we wanted to make sure things are, are going, going good. But we'll make sure to get that out of there too.
Eric, do you need to have documentation of those when they do that, especially with the fuel tank that's been buried? Eric, do you need to have documentation of those when they do that, especially with the fuel tank that's been buried? Not necessarily, okay.
Not unless that comes up as a condition of the conditional use permit when that application gets processed.
Sure, we can, uh...
That's right, you gotta do a conditional use permit.
Yep. Hopefully.
If we let you have the roads, then you gotta.
Technically, it's not a park yet, it's just public land, so, um, at some point, hope to make it a park.
This is Mike, though, uh, there's no wells on this property?
There, there's no, there, we know of two wells, we're, we're, uh, in the lodge. Planning on getting those abandoned as they're doing demolition. We didn't know of any wells in the, anywhere else on the property, there's nothing on the Minnesota, um, website, um, nothing documented. Even the ones in the lodge weren't documented, I don't, I don't know if there's a timeframe where they.
It's relatively new.
Okay, okay.
On that index, a lot of the old stuff isn't.
Sure.
Because on the seller thing, it said there were no wells, and I thought that was kind of. Big lodge, they must have had a well.
Yeah.
Put water on the lake.
We, I, honestly, I think they did.
Are your campsites gonna have electrical hookups?
Uh...
The RV one?
Yes, the ones on the top will, yep, yep.
Water, and water supply to them or not?
Yep, yep, so we're, we'll have to follow the MDH rules, which four hundred feet, um, for water and sewer.
So you'll need, you'll need a well or something?
Yep, both on top and bottom.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Yep, and we're, uh, hopefully gonna get in the sewer design phase here and work with some, some folks on that.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, variance application forty-five V twenty-five and to accept, uh, the staff's findings of fact.
This is Larry, I will second that motion. We have a motion and a second to accept this variation, um, variance application. Uh, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Larry, I also vote aye.
All right, thank you. We'll, uh, probably see in a couple of months or so.
A winter project.
Thanks for all you guys do.
I'd like to see you sooner, I'd like to talk to you about something.
I know, I gotta get a phone.
It's been a, it's been a month.
Yeah.
Any communications, Eric?
Uh, only one would be in regard to next month, so far, we have three applications and the deadline is a week from today, so. Guess is as good as mine on what the final size of the agenda will be.
Anything else? Move to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You find a lot of stuff you said you refer to past, uh, variances? Where do you find all that?